Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, just as for all.
All right. Next order is the approval of our March ninth meeting minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Is Ed? Noah? Ken?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is yes.
Did Ed hear us?
He said yes, I believe. Is our first public comment is we had nobody give us any questions or comment? We have no public hearings. We do not have any reports of committees today. Is our department reports that will bring us down to our appointments. The first appointment, well, we have actually have two for the Recreation Commission.
Yeah, excuse me, Tom. Sandy Keys cannot make it.
Sandy won't be able to make it?
Sandy, yeah. So she would like to still be considered. Angela totally supports her application.
Well, I can speak for Sandy. I know her well.
Okay.
And the other, we have Drew McCormick requesting to be a regular member for a three-year term. And Sandy Keys, an alternate member for a one-year term. We'll start with Drew. Welcome, Drew.
Hi, thank you.
How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Not bad. If you could just give us a little bit of your background and tell us why you would like to be on the Rec Commission?
Sure. Well, I grew up in Berwick. And I recently moved back just last year. So I'm looking to get a little more involved in the town and politics, but more on the fun side with recreation, I figured. And as a kid, I have a lot of fond memories of the rec field, although my, my mom was the rec director. So I certainly wasn't the most popular kid at camp. She can be a little hard sometimes. But I loved the rec field and played a lot of sports growing up and just would like to get involved. And I know we have a new recreation director, so I'm hoping to help her breathe some life back into the whole thing.
Any questions from the board members for Drew?
No, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'll say I've known Drew all of her life. Is, 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 we've had some good times together over the years as we actually climbed Mount Blue together when she was very young.
Yep.
Do you remember that or not?
I do.
Yeah, we, is, so if there are no further questions for Drew, is looking for a motion?
A motion?
We have a motion to appoint Drew to the regular number of three years. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Thank you, Drew. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Keys, she's been a resident of Berwick for many, many years. And she was actually the recreation director for Berwick back in the nineties, I believe it was. Is she been, she had been active in other things in her life, but now she's getting ready to get back in. Much as Drew said, she'd like to get back involved, but not too hard. So she's looking to be appointed as an alternate member for a one-year term. Are there any questions? Maybe I can answer from the answer for the board? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to appoint.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Is Ed?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Five zero. All right. Under unfinished business. We were told by the town's attorneys that we need to make a few adjustments as far as how the town warrant was printed out. Is none of the numbers have changed from what we've already voted on. Is all that has been done is in some of the articles, the notes were incorporated into the question by the attorneys. So I need to go down through each and every article.
Did they change?
Only the wording.
Of the ones that changed, that's all we're doing?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and there is one additional article at the end. If I can find that. Is Article thirty-eight, I believe it was, is that one we'll need to take a new vote on. So here we go for the marathon reading again. Article one is to elect a moderator to preside over the meeting. Article two, elect by secret ballot to selectmen for a three-year term and one school board member for three years. Article three, shall the town vote to adopt the proposed amendments to the land use ordinance, exhibit A attached? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote, five zero. Article four, shall the town vote to adopt the proposed amendments to the zoning map? Article B, Exhibit B attached? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote, five zero. Article five, shall the town vote to adopt the proposed ordinance entitled Berwick Food Sovereignty? Exhibit three attached, the Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote, five zero. Article six, shall the town vote to use up to $2,400,000 from estimated revenues to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote. Article seven, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $415,400 for the general expense account to fund a variety of general expenses which are not easily classified from an accounting perspective under other departments, including a variety of required insurance premiums, audit services, legal services rendered by the town attorney, streetlights and traffic signals for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote, five zero. Article eight, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $481,450 for the town administration account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote, five zero. Article nine, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $290,904 for the town clerk account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article ten, shall the vote, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $186,601 for the planning account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $117,832 for the assessors office account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommend a yes vote, five zero. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $165,750 for the town hall account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article thirteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $54,526 as a second loan payment for the purchase of LED lighting as authorized by passage of Article three at the November fifth, two thousand nineteen supplemental town meeting? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article fourteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the general assistance account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article fifteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $260,679 for the police department account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five to zero. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,119,667, sixty-six hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the fire department account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote, five zero. Article seventeen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1237,522 for the public works account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article eighteen, shall the town vote to authorize the expenditure of all revenues received from the state of Maine urban rural initiative program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? For road improvements as authorized by the program with unspent balances to be carried forward each year? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article nineteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $591,255 for the refuse disposal account which funds the operations of the Berwick Transfer Station for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article twenty, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of $263,667 for the recreation account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article twenty-one, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $291,702 for the Berwick Public Library account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article twenty-two, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $498,646 for debt service to cover this appropriation for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? And as authorized by the passage of Article thirty-one and thirty-two at the two thousand and sixteen annual town meeting and Article, Article five at the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen referendum election? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article twenty-three, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,700 for the community agency appropriations account, which will be used to make contributions to and at the request of the following outside agencies or purposes? Coast bus service, Memorial Day services, Seacoast Shipyard Association for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five to zero. Article twenty-four, tell, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $196,388 for the annual fire protection for fire hydrants costs for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five to zero. Article twenty-five, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $600,000 for its use for pulp, for road, bridge and sidewalk construction and repairs, as well as town parking lots and public ways, including expenses for curbing, drainage and engineering fees when required, with the funds to be used in conjunction with the state of Maine urban rural initiative program with unspent balances to be carried forward each year? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article twenty-six, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $23,900 for the federal stormwater program which implements state and federal permitting requirements for discharge from municipal separate stormwater sewer systems, MS fours, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? And place this amount into the account established for this purpose with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five to zero. Article twenty-seven, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for economic development purposes for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? And place this amount into the account established for this purpose with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article twenty-eight, shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with landowners and to purchase property from landowners using impact fees that are allowed to be used for these types of community projects for the purpose that allows the expansion of Memorial Field? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article twenty-nine, shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell or transfer ten school street map, U zero zero one lot zero zero seven, a town owned property, which is the old fire station? Including land and buildings and including the execution of all agreements and other documentation to effect such sale or transfer as it deems advisable in the best interest of the town and to use all funding to offset the fire station bond? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five to zero. Article thirty, shall the town approve a capital project consistent of various renovations, upgrades and improvements to the Berwick Water Plan, including engineering and design costs, transaction costs and other expenses reasonably related thereto? Appropriate the sum of $1,200,000 to provide for the cost of the project and to raise funds from users fees? Authorize the treasurer and chairman of the Board of Selectmen to fund appropriation through the issuance of general obligation securities of the town with or without call provisions, with or without premiums, including temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,200,000 and to delegate to the treasurer and the chairman of the Board of Selectmen the authority and discretion to fix the date, maturities, interest rates, denominations, calls for redemption with or without premium, reach of funding form and other details of said securities, including authority to execute and deliver the securities on behalf of the town? An estimated interest rate? Patty, do I have to read the financial statement that goes with that? Okay. The financial statement? Total town indebtedness. Bonds outstanding and unpaid after budgeted payments. Seven million, twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Bonds authorized and non-issued, zero. Additional bonds to be issued if this article is approved, one million, two hundred thousand. Total indebtedness with approval of this article is eight million, two hundred, twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. At an estimated interest rate of one percent, the estimated cost of these bonds over a period of twenty years will be one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents interest and twelve thousand dollars in fees or a total debt service of one million, four hundred, eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Funding will be raised by user fees. Validity of the bonds and of the voter's ratification of the bonds may not be affected by any errors in the above estimates. The actual amount of the total debt service for the bond issues varies from, if the total, if the actual amount of the total debt service for the bond issue varies from the estimate, the ratification by the electors is nevertheless conclusive and the validity is not affected by reason of the variance. Yeah. The Board of Selectmen yes recommends a yes vote of five zero. Please don't make me read that again. Article thirty-one, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,634 for debt service in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? And authorized by the passage of Article thirty-seven at the nineteen ninety-seven annual town meeting, which will fund one half the cost of repayment for the water department bond issued by the Federal Rural Development Agency for the new water treatment plant in nineteen ninety-nine? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article thirty-two, shall the town vote to accept James Way as a public right of way as requested by residents? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article thirty-three, shall the town vote to accept Riverbend as a public right of way as requested by residents? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article thirty-four, shall the town vote to authorize the select board and treasurer to accept on behalf of the town any gifts of money or property, including trust funds that may be given or left to the town for the purpose of supporting Berwick Community Television, which is currently funded entirely by franchise fees paid by the cable company Comcast? Placing such funds into a non-lapsing account and to authorize the expenditures of any such funds for the open operating expenses of and/or capital improvements for Berwick Community Television? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article thirty-five, shall the town vote to authorize the use of interest only from the Lennox Clock Trust Fund? The interest balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty was twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, which was the close of the prior fiscal year? And use the funds when there are major repairs or maintenance needs at the town hall? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article thirty-six, shall the town vote to charge interest on unpaid taxes at a rate of six percent per annum? And to set the date when taxes committed for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? Which is July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two? Become due and payable as of October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one and April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two? With said interest to be collected after October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one and April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two? And allow the tax collector to accept payment of taxes prior to the tax commitment date? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote of five zero. Article thirty-seven, shall the town vote to set an interest rate of four percent as allowed by state law? As a rate to be paid to taxpayers who pay amounts in excess of amounts finally assessed and authorize any such interest paid on collectible taxes or abankments granted to be charged against the annual overlay? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes vote, five zero. And Article thirty-eight, and this is, this is the new one. We have not voted on this. As I will expect the brief explanation from the town manager. Article thirty-eight, shall the town vote to increase the property tax levy limit, LD one, established for the town of Berwick by state law? In the event that the municipal budget approved under preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit for current and future years? Could you explain that?
I'm not sure exactly the date, but the state during early or mid two thousands, twenty, twenty-one or they put in legislation, a bill to try to keep communities not to overtax and go crazy, I guess, and keeping it somewhat under control. There is a formula that's used to the Department of Revenue that we are required to calculate out, the assessors do it every year, to how much based on a percentage that's given us by the revenue department? We can increase our expenditures. This article allows us, which is sometimes very, very difficult if you have needs that, and we, this budget's very basic, so sometimes you have to have authorization to exceed the tax levy amount, which is pretty common in most towns that you do it every year to vote on that. Otherwise, it's, the revenue department gets after you for, if you exceed that. We've always been able to stay within that, I think, historically, so it's. And that's what it means.
All right. Any questions for the town manager? Doesn't appear to be. As I, I am familiar with it. I don't know the whole background of it. No.
It's, is, so. It was an article, there was a, I can remember, I was in green at the time. It was a big argument about LD one A or something and there's led by somebody out of the Brunswick, Topsom area. The cap taxes failed, thank goodness, but, but out of that, the revenue department and legislative people put this in place and it's been helpful. So it's not a bad thing. It just helps us control things and keep things in check.
There are no further questions as it'll be a simple yes and no vote is by show of hands. All those of in favor of putting this on the warrant, Article thirty-eight as read? Say aye, raise your hands. Looks like five zero, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't promise.
Okay, back on to the regular meeting. Town managers report.
I have a few things here. I'm going to read a couple of letters that deals with our staff and some of our departments. The first one was written to Mr. Eldridge. They kind of crossed. It's supposed to be Mr. Eldridge. Congratulations are in order for the town of Berwick and for Patricia Murray, town clerk. The Maine Town and City Clerks Association has awarded Patricia certification which carries a distinction of a certified clerk of Maine, CCM status. This certification process has required many hours of dedication to achieve. The certification process requires that applicants receive training in a number of courses that relate to their field of expertise and continue with this education in an effort to retain their certification status. Patricia will be recognized for receiving this certification at the Maine Town and the City Clerks Association's annual meeting in September. And the Maine Town and the City Clerks Association understands the investment of time and resources it takes to achieve this. Benefits for the certification include expanded network of peers, enhanced knowledge of applicable state and federal laws, exposure to broadened processes and municipalities across the state and instills a deeper sense of confidence. In addition to municipalities may further benefit with reduced fees for insurance and bonds. Again, congratulations to Patricia Murray. And she joins a prestigious group of municipal clerks who approach their career with the utmost professionalism and well-earned.
Congratulations, Patty.
This is a very Maine Town and City Clerks, I think, is a pretty prestigious and pretty good group. I've dealt with them off and on. But the other one I have is for our police department. As you know, Chief Town has been talking about the Maine Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. And they have, I'll read what they said. The accrediting body of the Maine Chiefs of Police Association met recently to review the police, Burke Police Department's assessment report, which was compiled by a team of trained Uh Burke Police Department's assessment report, which was compiled by a team of trained uh M E L E A P assessors. Following a careful evaluation of your agency. They ensure that the candidate agencies have addressed the most critical of law enforcement issues in both policies as well as actual operations. The assessment process verifies that departments have the required policies, procedures, training and physical infrastructure to comply with their standards. Uh is with great pride and pleasure to inform you that the LEAP committee. Voted unanimously to award the Burwick Police Department with accreditation status. It's truly a pleasure working with not only yourself, but your entire team. This is a process that they've been doing for over a year. Uh we're one of the only communities in York County that has this. Um I give congratulations to the department. They all worked pretty hard to get this. And it's just goes to show um the caliber of what we have in our police department. It's very exciting.
Congratulations to all of them also.
Absolutely, yep. Um other things, uh the edge, just so the public knows, you'll start seeing demolition next week of the other two buildings across the street here. And uh hopefully that will take probably a few weeks, but after that you'll start seeing they. I don't think they've finished the planning board process yet, but they will hopefully break ground this spring. Uh we just submitted our stormwater management plan to the state. Uh Christie uh Robowski, who is our engineering firm that she we share with other communities, finished it up. I'm going to have it put up on the website and I'll send you each copies of it. It's quite thick. Uh but they, she's done a great job and we've had a lot of meetings, James and uh. Uh Jody and and code enforcement who deal with all that uh have met numerous times. So that's been submitted and should, it's very good. She's excellent at what she does. Uh today, um James and I met with the M D O T to talk about shovel ready projects. Um that was an interesting discussion and they know about as much as we do about the stimulus fund, the stimulus fund that's coming, but. Uh but they were going to send them a list of all the projects we have ready to go. In the same, uh we had another meeting earlier on Monday. With uh Christie, our engineer about the MS four project. Uh and uh we had our engineers from uh Jason Ready from Malone and McBroom at at that meeting as well. And um talking about trying to find stimulus money, which is a shovel ready project that engineering is all done on that project. And we're just waiting for funds and we're going to send that off to um. The governor's office, she has a person, staff person who is dealing with shovel ready projects. It's all this money is not coming through the D E P, so we want to make sure we get our name on the list and uh. Hopefully um we'll be able to secure some funding. We talked with the D O T, we talked about bridges, we talked about the Sawmill Hill project. And the streetlights downtown and some of the other sidewalks downtown and hopefully, and I guess. Our Great Falls construction has been in conversations with James about uh matching funds if we need to, they'll work with us, so that's encouraging. Uh we also met uh with Revision Energy this week. And they look at a proposal that they are making for us to uh save money on electricity. We've been bombarded by a number of different outfits, uh one being a company called Best Practices, which is. A middleman and they look around, try to find you savings uh and also are proposing that we take part. In a solar farm, one in uh you uh Waterboro, a Walderboro. And Revision has a uh a putting together a solar farm in Sydney. And it's a twenty year, each of these are a twenty year commitment, but I'm not ready to say yes and I'm going to, next meeting. I'll bring you documents and send, give you a time to read it. I'll send it out to you as you can take a look and we can talk about what we want to do. Uh if we want to do anything. Um otherwise, that's all I have. Any questions or? Yeah, guys just saw that today. Holy cow, that's huge. Yeah, that's Wes Bardwell's uh project.
There's a.
They rent the land from him.
Right, yeah, it's a lease deal, right, but. But the same one, the 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 planning board's working on one over on Hubbard Road up on the Lebanon end, two. Big bigger than that one. Yeah, I think it's about twenty acres.
How how big is Less's? How many acres?
I think it's the planning board, I was, I was in the planning was twelve acres, I think is what.
Yeah, we'll we'll reach out to both of them and see how they're managing the money, you know, going into the grid. Yeah, it'd be nice to do something with somebody in Burwick, so. Yes, I I talked to Revision about that and they are going to work up the numbers. We talked about putting solar panels on the police station roof. On the roof of the new fire station and also behind the uh police department on that bank.
You're talking about it, the sewer treatment.
Oh, I don't.
You don't have, you're not mic'd up.
I know Jay Wheeler early on had talked about that and I don't, I haven't heard much about it recently. So I can reach out to Jay and see if it's something that they're considering.
Yeah.
Seems to be the trend.
We talked about the the um um money for the water treatment, right?
The what?
Water treatment plant?
Yes.
Is the water treatment plant break even or do we make money on that? How, what's going on with that?
It's usually a break even.
So it's about a break even. It's not costing us any money, but we're not making it.
Well, this year uh we uh, it's going to be very tight this year.
What's that mean? We're making money on it or we're losing money on it?
We, well, you're probably going to spend more than you take in.
Take in, that's a lot of go, a lot of, you know, upkeep.
A lot of stuff that we've been uh trying to get upkeep on and plus uh we're chasing money for people to pay their bills.
Water bills?
Yep, so it's been, it's difficult for some people right now with this pandemic stuff going on and. We do, I think, you know, the finance office does a good job chasing it and uh and we have the authority to shut people off if they don't pay. So it's uh, it's a chasing game.
Just happened because of the COVID, you know, it's because of the COVID or has that always been a problem?
I don't think it's ever been as bad as it is right now.
It's never been a major problem.
No, they, they're pretty good about collecting, but you know, Lisa Houston used to do it and then James did it for quite a while. Uh and then uh now Cole McIntyre is doing it um and. People respond when we tell them we're going to turn the water off, so it's, it's just a matter of time, but um. This year's budget uh is going to be very different. I haven't put it on pa, I've got it all on paper. I just want to fine tune it before I bring it to you.
Much of an increase, you think?
I don't know yet. I've got to look at the, how we have, probably going to have to notify the P U C that we're looking at a rate increase.
Yeah, I have to go through the.
We've got about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of uh capital improvement projects that need to be done. Uh a lot of it's going to depend on what we find for water, because luckily we don't have to go to the voters for this. It's only the you as a board who approves it. And they will start in April, start uh doing some test, you know, meeting with the landowners that said that you could drill. And then pick out the ones they want to drill on. And they had about eight different people say they could, so that's a plus. Um and if they can find the water quality that we're looking for in the volume. We will still have to do some upgrades. I mean, you're you're working on two pumps that you have in in the uh plant right now that. One aren't big enough to really do what they're supposed to do and two, they're as old as the plant is. They have not been replaced ever.
We can't get any state money for that, what?
Well, the next, the other, coming out of the Congress is uh this next infrastructure bill and it's got money. In it for water and sewer projects, so I'm hoping uh that we can benefit from that.
Yeah, and there again, we'll be ahead of the game because we've already started the engineering and everything.
That's right. We've already started all that work, so we were ahead of the game, but it's just a matter of getting people's attention and uh. Making sure that we're on the list. We have um, you know, the the MS four project is a one point three, one point five million dollar project. And we ca, I pushed it off the last two years and we have the, yeah, up on uh Molton Road.
That's that, we have to do that to state, right?
Federal government mandates that.
Yeah, so they've been, they've been lenient because they know it's been hired, you know, that's like the the last.
We get a couple more years out, don't we? Get problems with COVID.
Yeah, well, Christine's done, Christine's done a good job, pushing it back, but she has to have good reasoning and.
We got it, COVID.
Yeah.
Well, well, it's not just that, is we have to upgrade our uh water plant, you know.
Right, which is more important.
Right, so.
So, lot, lot going on.
All right, anything, any other questions for Steve? Patty, I want to circle back to you if I could. Is um the uh signing for the town meeting warrant in the proposed land use ordinance? It says we've already voted on all the articles. Do we actually need to vote on those?
No, you're just signing that that.
Because they've already voted on everything, all right, that's fair thought, all right, thank you. And Angela, can you hear me?
I can.
Are you waiting for your appointments to your board?
No, Patty already told me that they got appointed.
All right, I didn't want you just hanging around just waiting, thinking that you were waiting for us, okay.
I like to listen in since I haven't been around to hear what's happening in town.
You're that bored, huh? All right, we're moving on. Um is I have nothing under selectmen's communications that'll bring us to our uh accounts payable. We have a payroll warrant fifty eight for March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one. The amount of seventy thousand two hundred sixty five dollars and forty seven cents. We have an account payable warrant sixty for March twenty third, two thousand twenty one. The amount of two hundred eighty four thousand six hundred twenty six dollars and sixty four cents. And we have a payroll warrant number fifty nine for March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one for the amount of seventy one thousand eighty eight dollars and sixty five cents. Uh make a motion that we pay our bills. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll go through the roll. If there's no further discussion, is Ed?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark? And myself is a yes. Okay, thank you. That brings us to new business. Now first up on the new business, we have Americans with Disabilities Act Preservation Resolution by the Beacon of Sovereignty. Um this has not been brought forth by a resident of Burwick. Um is I did a little bit of research on the Beacon of Sovereignty. And all I could basically find was that it's a Facebook page. Um it appears that they send these out to all the town councils and select boards and. Things like that, just getting people to do it. It is basically, they're saying that the CDC's. Requirements, both the Maine and the federal CDC requirements for wearing masks goes against the Americans with Disabilities Act. This has been addressed multiple times in multiple places. Is for Burwick is um our. Chief medical person, like emergency person was the chief dentist plan.
Yep.
And uh he follows the uh York County Emergency Management Protocols, the Maine CDC protocols and the. Federal CDC protocol, so. I don't see where we have a need to do this. If there's any of you want to further discuss this, is go right ahead. Otherwise, uh we'll pass on it. Any willingness? It doesn't look like it.
Tom, my, my only comment is it refers back to uh the governor's executive order. And thinks that that's incorrect. I read the executive order and nothing in the executive order specifically says it. Detracts from disabled people and it's, it specifically says. Nothing should be interpreted or prohibiting a reasonable accommodation for those with a disability, so. I don't see where this resolution does anything other than get people up in arms.
Yep, all right, with that we'll move on. Is the York County Budget Committee caucuses?
Is that this time of year, uh they are asking uh people who would like to uh. Sit on the committee, uh there's a caucus uh Wednesday, April fourteenth at the York County Courthouse. To um pick representatives if you're interested. So it's, it has to be uh elected officials from the twenty nine participating cities and towns. Uh if anybody's interested, uh write that down. Wednesday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty one at six thirty P M. If anybody's interested, let me know and I'll forward you some more information. Don't all speak up at once.
Yep. All right, we'll move on. Is uh, we have no quick claim deeds, is it'll go to our abatements, supplements and farmland penalties. Karen, are you with us? Our assessor Karen Fortier is uh, we'll wait for her. How are you?
Good, thank you. How are all of you?
We seem to be doing all right. We're still moving along in our meeting, so.
Yes, I've been listening, so it's, that's, that's good. Good, good stuff happening in Burwick. Uh we have a few items um for tonight. Uh we start off with um three abatements. And I'd like to talk about all three of them at once because they're, they're all related.
I, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the land and the people involved, so yeah, I, I was going to suggest we do the same thing.
Right, so uh basically um there's three abatements that resulted from um. A lot split. There was a parcel on Mountain View Road, the mother lot um split off three lots. Um and the mother lot had mountain views and it had a land factor on it. However, and we transferred that to each of these three parcels. However, when we went to the site again, we went down and actually. The road really slopes down so that these lots actually just have a standard average view of the woods and not a superior uh mountain view. So as a result of the change in this land factor, the assessed value was reduced. For all three of these parcels by the same amount, which is fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. So it results um in a recommendation for an abatement to be granted to each of these. Uh in the amount of two hundred and eighty four dollars and fifty nine cents. And the parcels are identified by their map and lot on Mountain Road. The uh map is R thirty six, lot sixteen dash one. Lot R thirty six sixteen dash two and R thirty six sixteen dash three.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm, I'm familiar with these parcels and I know exactly what you're talking about because the, the road does slope down. Rather, rather precipitously there and uh yeah, they, they don't, they do not have any views others, like I said, of the, of the trees surrounding them. Um are there any other questions for Karen? If not, I want to take a motion to uh grant the abatement on all three parcels.
移到
Go have a second? We have a motion and a second. Was any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Ed?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark? And myself is a yes. All right, next up Karen.
So the next one is a farmland penalty. Um this property is located on Portland Street. Uh it's a fifty one point six acre parcel. It's map R seventy two, lot seventeen. Um and this property's been classified in the farmland program since nineteen ninety one. Um and just as a reminder, this classification provides for valuation of land based on its current use as farmland. Rather than the potential fair market value for use of other than agriculture. So um on March ninth, uh the assessing office receives a farmland application. Uh from the new property owner uh who purchased the property in January uh twenty fourth of twenty twenty. The property owner also submitted um a recent. The property owner also submitted um a recent land survey uh of the subject showing an increase in acreage from forty-nine to fifty-one point six, so we always um adjust our uh maps to uh a certified surveyors uh surveying of the land, so there was a uh an increase in acreage regarding that. But so therefore, according to the farmland application, three point nine four acres are being removed from farmland pasture classification, and as a result, the penalty must be assessed um per the state law uh for farmland penal, the farmland penalty is equal to the taxes that would have been assessed had the property been assessed at its fair market value as available first for the preceding five years, less any taxes paid during this period plus interest on the difference. And I included the farmland cal calculation spreadsheet uh to show you how we determine the penalty. Um and this pen, this spreadsheet was also provided to the property owner, so uh he is aware and of this penalty and how it, how that works. Therefore, it's recommended that you approve a supplemental tax bill for this farmland penalty in the amount of one thousand sixty-three dollars and forty-six cents to the property owner for the removal of three point nine four acres from farmland pasture classification.
Any questions for Karen? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and I have a second, no further discussion, I'll go through the roll, is Ed?
Yes.
Noah? Yes, is uh Ken?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right, and next Karen?
So the last item um is a uh recommendation for a tree growth penalty. Uh the property is located on Hubbard Road, uh map R twenty-three, lot five. It's a twenty-three acre parcel that's uh all of its acreage currently is classified as tree growth. Um on March seventeenth, the assessing office received a written request um by the owners Todd Brooks and Jennifer Porter um to remove three acres from tree growth as noted on uh their amended tree growth map. So when they remove um acres from the tree growth, they are to tell us exactly where that is to be located. Um so when we 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 updated our application and the map, as a result. Um assessing provided the property owners with a copy of the tree growth penalty calculation spreadsheet indicating the tree growth penalty for this removal um is fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Um, as a result of this request, the three acres classified as tree growth will now be assessed in accordance to market value and a tree growth penalty must be assessed pursuant to the tree growth law. Uh please see the tree growth penalty calculation sheet for the details regarding this penalty. Um and so for the tree growth penalty, that is determined by the difference between uh the uh assessed ratio, uh when it's in tree growth minus the uh the uh assessed value if it's not in tree growth, so that difference is the amount of seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars, uh the property's been in tree growth for forty-one years, so the percentage is reduced to twenty percent of that difference, so that's how we get to the penalty amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Um therefore, it's recommended that the select board approve the tree growth penalty in the amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Any questions of Karen?
Karen, when are you in the office here, what days?
Mondays and Wednesdays.
First day in the morning and?
Yeah, all day, she's here all day, Monday and Wednesday, so, usually, yeah.
Is uh, if no other questions, is um entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I'll go through the roll, is Ed?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, thank you Karen.
You're welcome, thank you, have a good night, thanks.
All right. That brings us, we have no other public comment. We do have an executive session, so before we get to that, does anybody else have any other business non-agenda items they'd like to bring up? Doesn't appear to be. Um, is the executive session, we won't be taking a vote on anything, is the discussion of personnel. So, under Title One, subsection four oh five, six D for the discussion of personnel. I will make a motion that we go into executive session, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll go through the roll, Ed?
Yes.
Noah? Yep, Noah is yes, Ken?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself is yes, maybe just give us a few minutes to get things uh straightened out here and uh thank you everybody.